All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Hall for Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, May 2, 2024. This is kind of a special meeting out of sequence, out of our normal sequence. It is 7:00 PM. We are here meeting in Town Hall, Meeting Room 124. We do have one of our board members remote, so if there is any voting, we will have to do a roll call vote. Just want to remind everybody that members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting here this evening here at Town Hall. It is also simulcast, I guess you could say, remote via Zoom as those, as we do have one of our board members on Zoom. And then please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the remote connection. All meeting links and call-in numbers were posted on the Town website. And this meeting is also, will be live streamed on NCTV and the YouTube channel. So we will go ahead and get, well, actually, let's do some quick introductions. So the board that's here tonight, we do have our associate member, Christian. We got our vice chair, Chris Monfort, myself, Chad Peck, Eric Diamond, Melissa Mayo, and on Zoom, we have Gary Sullivan. So we do have a very short agenda tonight. Like I said, it is a special meeting. So we will go ahead and get started with our 7:00 PM public hearing.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48, Mass. General Law that the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 2, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Norfolk Town Hall on Liberty Lane, Norfolk to discuss proposed changes to Norfolk zoning bylaw, which have been submitted to the warrant for the 515-24 Annual Town Meeting. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review in the Town Hall of Norfolk website or the Plaid Office between the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. The articles are as follows. Article 26, see if the Town of Norfolk will vote to amend Norfolk zoning bylaw, adding the following new language, Section 310-8.5, Town Hill/Ponville MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, and by adding the following new language in bold print, and by deleting the following strike-through language to the section of the zoning bylaw enumerated and displayed below as follows. 1. Section 310-2.1, Definitions. 2. Section 310-3.1, Types of Districts. 3. Section 310-3.2, Location of Districts, or to take any action in relation thereto.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm, I'll speak a little bit here and then I'm going to kind of pass it off to Rich to get, to see if he's got anything to add. And then we do have a slideshow on this. But um, so this is a public hearing that we opened in, well, this is a new public hearing, but we did have a previous public hearing that we opened and closed on this same topic. We then took that, that warrant article to, to our town council, to the Attorney General at the state. They then provided additional feedback on that to just simplify it and clean up some of the language and, and take care of any, any of that. There, then there is one change to this, so we did remove an inclusionary bylaw. Or I'm sorry, we didn't, we moved inclusionary bylaw changes from the warrant. And this, this MBTA zoning article referenced that other one. So those two articles were combined together and we decided to pull those apart. And to do that, we needed to add a little bit of language to this MBTA article to talk about the affordable housing and what those limits were. Because as we'll find out, there is certain limitations with the affordable housing in, in the MBTA zone, overlay zone. And we didn't want that referencing another article that had to be voted on at town meeting. So we, we built this so that it can stand on its own two legs, probably the best way to explain it. So that is why we're here tonight. So because of the AG comments, because of our town council comments, and also to add in the affordable housing language, to make it so that this article is a whole inclusive article, we are here tonight. And so I'm going to let Rich see if he's got anything else to add to that before we go into the slides.
What I would add is that we did send this version to the AG.
Yes.
Just to have it reviewed again. And she reported back, she had no, no changes. It was as written, perfectly fine. So it's acceptable to the AG as being proposed, so.
Okay. And Town, and our Town Council as well.
Yes, yes, and Town Council, but yes.
Okay.
Um, I think probably the best thing would be to kind of defer and to Melissa and Gary to go through the slide presentation that they put together to talk.
I want to ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
And this might be fine in what Eric read the notice. On here, we're pointing to Article 26 in our agenda. In the actual warrant, which I have in front of me, it looks like we're actually talking about Article 25.
That's true, because they moved the.
Because they, because we pulled out Article 25, which was the.
Yeah.
Inclusionary bylaw changes.
Okay, so as far as.
So what we'll probably do in the end, if you decide to recommend this, we'll just in the vote recommend it's Article 5.
25.
25, yeah.
25, sorry, on the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And it's because the warrant was reordered slightly.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Good point, Chris.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody, before we go into the slides, anybody else got any quick comments? And then anybody that's on Zoom or in the room, kind of just save your comments and questions until we go through the slides on that, so.
Yeah, we do have a questions section at the end.
Okay. All right. Who wants, Melissa, Gary?
Yeah, I'll start.
Let you take it.
So Gary is on Zoom. Those of you that are in the room can see him with his headset on there. So Gary and I created this, this presentation on behalf of the planning board. And what is in this presentation is what will be proposed at town meeting for a vote on May 15. So the presentation was created in preparation for town meeting to explain the MBTA community zoning, what it means for Norfolk, and provide residents with information required to make an informed decision at town meeting. So we have the public meeting today, right now, and then we're also going to be hosting a community forum on the 9th of May as well, in case you happen to hear of anybody that missed it and wants to see another one live or come for questions. We will be having the community forum, and it's via Zoom. That'll be posted on the website, the Town website. And there'll also be a live presentation at town meeting. And we talked about having colored handouts, right? Because the black and white one isn't very helpful, right? So, yeah, okay, thank you.
And that meeting on the 9th is completely remote, so there won't, nobody, so don't come to one on Liberty Lane if you decide to do something.
Good point.
Thank you. Okay, you want to just go to the agenda? Thank you. So we just put a quick agenda together, so we're just going to go through the basics of what the MBTA community law is, what it means for Norfolk, the overlay district map. A couple of years ago, you'll probably remember, we did have a B1 zoning change that was presented at town meeting. So there is a section in here to show how this differs from what was approved a couple of years ago. And then we have, of course, we have some, you know, kind of high-level, frequently asked questions. We figured we'd just go through those real quick and then open up for questions from the community. Okay, thank you. So while the MBTA zoning seems to have been largely unknown until recently from the community at large, it's actually not new to us. And it's actually from 2021 originally. So it was, it was passed by the Massachusetts House of Representatives, then went to the Senate, and then was signed into law back in 2021 by, at the time, Governor Baker. There are 177 communities across Massachusetts that are either MBTA or MBTA adjacent communities that need to comply with, with the same requirements that we do. And essentially what it is at the highest level is just, there was a lack of multifamily zoning in, I guess, all really of the MBTA communities. And so this is basically supposed to create the ability to have the multifamily development that is close to the train for transportation, but also kind of diversifies the housing stock. Because, you know, in Norfolk, if you all lived here, you know, there's just a whole lot of four-bedroom colonials. There are some more townhouses coming in and things like that, which is, which is great, and we'll go through those in a few minutes. But we were kind of a, a little bit ahead of this with our development, which is great news for Norfolk. And, but it's essentially just multifamily development, and it has to be as a right, meaning we can't have special permits or anything like that, anything that would impede the process of approving the permits and things of that nature. The specific requirements, this is, this is what we had to work with. So at least one district of reasonable size. In the guidelines, it's actually mentioned that that is 50 acres minimum. Multifamily housing that's suitable for families, minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, located not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. We'll talk a little bit about that after, but part of our, we have two districts. One of them is within that half mile, which was approved for us to separate them. And we cannot have age restrictions. So a lot of our developments recently have been over 55 communities. With this type of, with this law, we cannot have any sort of age restriction whatsoever. And then, so we have here, what does it mean for Norfolk? So we received a grant to fund an engagement with a third-party consultant, Horsley Witten. And so what we did is we went through, we ran all the different scenarios. It's, it was just a lot of math mostly, but we had to figure out which parts of the town would make the most sense for this. And so, you know, while we were working with Horsley Witten, we had a couple of different, well, I guess more than a couple, right? How many, we had probably maybe four or five options that we had at some point. And what we believe made the most sense for Norfolk was to split up the MBTA overlay districts. One district near the MBTA, since it has to be within a half a mile, it made sense to have that one there. We also have a second district that's over in the Pondville area that we'll show you in detail in a few minutes. We, as a planning board, were able to go in and select the actual parcels. They just, they had to be contiguous, which means they just, they have to share a border, you know, touching lots. And so those were the guidelines that we had. And then we were just trying to figure out where it made the most sense. If these lots were to be developed, where would we want that based on the master plan and all the feedback we received from residents? The B1 zoning committee, that was a few years ago that I mentioned, there was a lot of resident feedback in that process as well. And so we tried to just take all of that together and figure out what made the most sense, what we should propose at, to the Town of Norfolk to solve for this new law. And then we've heard time and time again that residents want a walkable downtown, small businesses, mixed use. And, you know, part of the B1 process was, you know, a lot of people said they wanted to have the businesses on the first floor, small businesses, and then maybe apartments or condos above. So we did actually look into having a multifamily, was it multifamily? No, mixed-use mandate.
Mandatory mixed-use?
Thank you. Mandatory mixed-use district where we would basically, you know, since we already have that district, we wanted to be able to say, okay, we will, we'll have the apartments or condos above. We'll have the, the small businesses on the bottom. Unfortunately, that didn't get approved from the state because our bylaws are pretty restrictive. They're very specific, so you have to have 65% residential, 35% commercial. And in addition to that, we also require parking for non-residential units in our town bylaws, which we were not able to require. So we could not use the B1 with the, with the mixed use. And so we started to go a little bit outside of that and, because we, we definitely want to make sure that we save those parcels of land for small businesses for that mixed use. And if we had said, okay, the whole downtown is going to be the MBTA overlay district, they could have put just residential in front of Walgreens, for example. And the developer does have the option to do mixed use, but we couldn't require it, if that makes sense. So they had, they would have had the option to basically put a, a big apartment building right in front of Walgreens. So we couldn't do that. That's just not at all what we've heard the residents of Norfolk want. So we started going a little bit outside of that, but we had to stay within that half-mile radius. And so what we've landed on is, I mentioned the two different districts, we'll go through those. But for the overlay district in, in Town Hill, we're calling it the Town Hill Overlay District. The, a lot of the lots are actually, actually in that, in that particular one, all of the lots are already built. In Pondville, and I'll show you the, I took all screenshots from the GIS map, and, and we'll go through all of them in detail. But we were able to, in, so in the, in the MBTA overlay district, Town Hill, all of the land is actually already developed. And then in Pondville, there are three open lots where nothing is built right now. Thank you. So this is the map that was released, and it's not easy on the eyes. So, you know, as I mentioned before, I mean, we really wanted to hold the district, like the B1 district, for the small businesses and make sure that we were holding up, you know, what the residents have said time and time again that they want. The district itself is outlined in orange. And because our lots had to be contiguous, there's some in there that are outlined in orange, but they have green diagonal lines. And those are because, you know, one of them, for example, I believe is Town Hall, one of them is the fire station. We're obviously not going to redevelop those for residential, but we needed the borders to be touching, so we had to include them. But then the green lines are there to show that that didn't actually, that didn't count as the total acreage that we needed for that area. And then these are the screenshots, so the, the area that we have, so the, I have screenshots of every single lot and every single district so that you can see what's there now and the potential for development in the future. So these ones, I would say, are very low risk for redevelopment because they were just developed. And they already kind of meet the requirements-ish, kind of generally, you know, they are multifamily. Some of them are touching, some of them are not, but they are more dense, and it is close to the train. And this does kind of give, you know, this is what we have currently downtown, and this is accepted, even though it's already built, it's accepted as a parcel that we can use as part of this overlay district. And then for, oh, thank you. And then on the next slide, so we have 18 Union Street, that's, that's part of this district as well. That's already mixed use, it has residential units above. Then the other three, though, so those are part of our district, could be multifamily, but right now, they are single-family occupancy, so single-family homes. And there's 20 Union Street, that's right next to 18 Union. And then down below, you'll see 114 Main Street, it's way off the road. So where, where I have the red circle is where you enter that property. And then I just took a screenshot from the GIS map to show you what's there currently. So if, so that could potentially be developed as multifamily if that homeowner wanted to do that, just, just so we're clear. Right now, it's single-family, and it's already developed, but it could be redeveloped. And the same with 112 Main Street as well. Can't really see it, but where that red circle is, it's kind of, it's back in the woods there. And then there's a, my arrow there for Boyd's Crossing to show you that Boyd's Crossing is the very next parcel. That's, again, already built out. So kind of low risk for downtown for redevelopment unless those single-family homes decide that they would like to become something else. Oh, thank you. And then over here, so this is the, these are the other few parcels that we have in the Town Hill district. So there's, the blue building there is 15 Rockwood, it's currently mixed use. And then the one over from that is a single-family home. So again, same as what I mentioned before, if this single-family home wanted to redevelop, they could. Probably pretty low risk, but they could. And that is right next to the Village at Norfolk, which again is already built and already part of our overlay district. And then because we didn't have enough acreage, well, enough acreage plus the ability to build enough units that were required, we have this secondary location, which is over in Pondville. And so what we have, it's not 0.5 miles away from the train station, but only one of our districts had to be. And we thought this was a good location for a number of reasons. One, there's already, you know, a lot of townhouses being built over there, which I'll show you the pictures in a minute with the screenshots. But it's also, it's not far from the train. It's actually kind of in the middle of the Fox, Foxborough train and also the Norfolk one going either way. And then there's also Route 1 and Route 1A, so it's a convenient location that's close to, you know, stores and, and things like that. And there's also the Gatra Bus, I believe, right, that goes over there. And then in this district, it's much smaller, so I could put everything in one slide to show you all of the different parcels. So I hope you can see my arrows, but just to show you what's there currently. So 21 Valley Street, that is what I would call Light Industrial. You probably know the name of the business, I, I don't. But it's just, it's off of the road over in that direction, and that is where the arrow is pointing, where it's kind of like an L-shaped piece of land. And then Valley Street, there's residential townhomes all kind of in the front there. If you go down Valley Street and see them kind of side by side by side. And then behind that is, on the map, it looks like it's all trees, but it's actually not trees anymore. It is, it just, the GIS map has not been updated yet, but it is, the Hill Street Residential Town Homes is already there. There are a couple of single-family, there's two single-family homes in that district. And then there's two more Light Industrial that seem to be owned by the same owner at 8 Hill Street and 6 Hill Street. So that is, and then like I mentioned, there are three open lots. And one of them is 3.53 acres, one is 5.73 acres, and this little one on the corner, top left, is one acre. And then Gary's going to walk you through, Gary was on the B1 Committee a few years ago. So he's going to walk you through how this differs and how it's the same in certain cases with, with the number of units and multifamily housing and all of that fun stuff. So go ahead, Gary, if you can hear us.
You're, we can't hear you. Hold on one second.
Can you hear me?
Keep going, you're good. We can hear you.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, so, all right. So far, so good. Well, thanks for doing that, running the show here. So one of the things that we were looking at is, you know, back in 2021, we did make changes and, and large changes to our B1 zoning bylaws. And a lot of the questions that we're getting so far is how, how come we weren't thinking about this? Or how come there's no, there's no overlap with what MBTA communities is requiring? And the good news is there is overlap. So here, we built this table out to show what some of the MBTA community requirements are versus what we have already in B1 zoning. And the bottom three are, you know, it requires 15, MBTA communities requires 15 units per acre, and we allow gross density of 16 units per acre. MBTA communities requires no age restriction, and we, we don't have, you know, we did not put an age restriction in for, for the B1 zoning changes. And of course, it's located right in the center of our downtown where the MBTA station is, so we satisfied that by default. Two things that are not satisfied by the B1 zoning changes or the current bylaws that exist at B1 that are required by MBTA communities is the, that multifamily housing should be allowed by right. We allow it only mixed with commercial. And keep in mind, the B1 focus was how we are going to take, you know, our existing, you know, our existing lots that, that are in B1 and, and change that to that walkable downtown that everybody's been asking for for a long time now. And, you know, long-term plan would be to set this in motion as mixed, you know, mixed use. And we've worked with developers to try to get some engagement and some things built in the long term. But what MBTA communities requires is that it is multifamily by rights. Additionally, unit capacity, we were not thinking about large, or very large residential unit buildings. And again, we were also focused on that mixed use. So we had capped the, the unit capacity at 450 units. And what MBTA communities requires is a minimum of 750 units. So we would have to update our bylaws to, you know, to be able to fit into what MBTA communities is requiring. Think we can go to the next slide, which is frequently asked questions, yeah?
Yep, you can scroll down.
Do you want me to go through this, Melissa, or can I keep talking?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. All right. So, question. Is the new housing plan an expansion of affordable housing and/or 40B housing? And the answer is that this new requirement is separate. It does not include a required percentage of affordable units. However, the town bylaws require a percentage of affordable units. So we can require 10% affordable units, we, we cannot go over that. You know, there is some concern, and if anybody's read the news, there's plenty of towns, even some towns in our surrounding area that are worried about, you know, is this Massachusetts trying to steamroll their way into creating affordable housing? It's, as it's mentioned prior, it's not a production mandate. They're just trying to create an overlay district in each town that has MBTA station that, that would allow for multifamily housing. And, and so, so a question is, how has Norfolk engaged with the state? Or has the town pushed back on these requirements? And we were able to give feedback during a feedback window that was given. And we actively engaged in that feedback cycle. And the initial requirements, we felt, were just not, that, that just wasn't feasible for Norfolk to, to satisfy. And based off of that feedback from Norfolk and other towns, those, those requirements were changed to what they are now. So, you know, yes, we did push back, but it was very cooperative and diplomatic in the way that we were pushing back. Are we responsible for developing large-scale apartment buildings, right? And how would the town do that? This is not a development mandate, it's, it's not a production mandate, it's a zoning update mandate, right? It's, it's to allow this by rights, to allow developers to do this if they were so inclined. The town itself is not responsible for the development to happen. Property owners could develop their properties to meet these requirements. And I think that Melissa did a really good job finding, you know, photos of, of those properties that, that could be available free for redevelopment if the property owner and the developer wanted to do that. But, you know, most of the parcels that are going to be in this overlay district are already developed. And in a lot of cases, are newer developments and would not be prone to redevelopment anytime in the near, in, in the near future. And then another good question, because it does, it does align with some other conversations that we have in town, you know, between Town Hall and Planning Board about future sewer capacity and sewer infrastructure. Is the town required to build or expand town sewer infrastructure to support these new developments? And the answer is no. We are not required to develop the infrastructure necessary to, you know, to enable this sort of unit density and, and, yeah, unit density. Depending on the location of the new development, maybe up to tie it to existing infrastructure. We can go into that later if it's helpful, if anybody has those questions. But, you know, the answer is no, we're not going to be forced to spend money on. But, you know, the answer is no, we're not going to be forced to spend money on infrastructure to enable this. You can go to the next, next, next slide. You want to take this one, Melissa?
Sure. So there have been a lot of questions, what happens if Norfolk doesn't approve this at the town meeting? Because to be clear, we could, we're sponsoring this, we've created this plan for the town, but the town, every single person that comes to town meeting needs to vote on this. We as a board, we can't just, we can't push this through, we can't approve it. We are just providing the details to everybody else to make an informed decision. But it's up to the town people to actually vote on this. There have been a lot of, you know, there's questions, how would this affect us financially? How does it affect the schools? How does, you know, just all the questions that come up when you think about this. So, so we can go through some of that, and especially the financial aspect is the next slide. But, you know, just, just so everybody's aware, I don't know if you've been following the news, we certainly have about this topic. Milton, the town of Milton was the first one to vote the MBTA housing down. They did not approve it at their town meeting. So we've been watching them to see what happens next since, for two months now, I think that was February. And within days, the AG sued the town of Milton. Shortly after that, they had their grant funding pulled. And now they're embroiled in a legal battle back and forth that I believe is going to the Supreme Court, if I heard that correctly today. But I haven't seen that for myself.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, yes, Massachusetts. Yes, of course. And then, so that's just an example, and this isn't, I don't, I don't want to scare anybody, I'm just, we just want to give the information that this could happen. And of course, lawsuits are not cheap, and it would come out of the town budget if we were to fight back on this. As far as the financial impacts, oh, next one, thank you. There are a couple of certain funding areas that the, the AG has specifically noted, if you don't comply with this zoning overlay, well, for us, it's an overlay, but if you don't comply with this zoning, you'll lose funding from each of these three. You'll see like the Mass Works and Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Fund. And so we looked at, okay, well, how does that impact us today? We don't know how that would impact us in the future, because we don't know what grants that we might need, that they might offer in the future, that we are unaware of today. But we do know that we have certain projects that are in progress right now, where we have received funding that could potentially be an issue for us if we don't approve this. So $240,000 for the Norfolk Town Center wastewater master plan was through Housing Choice. $1.8 million for the Lawrence Street roadway improvements was through Mass Works. And of course, the Attorney General has issued a statement which clarifies communities who choose not to comply with this will be subject to civil enforcement action. And we've seen what happened to Milton, and really, we don't really know what's, what's next yet. Potential impact, so I have this one in here because we did get funding from Congressman Akenklaas, he got it for us, for, and it's earmarked for town sewer expansion. We don't think that that money would necessarily be impacted, but we do have other grants that are part of the total amount that we need to work on that project. So it could potentially put that project on hold if our other funds from the grants are pulled. And we also just put in another grant recently, again, for sewer expansion, this time for, from MCI Norfolk. This was through Mass, Mass Works, and it's pending, hasn't been approved yet, so we can't say that it's definitely something that we would even get that would then be pulled. But it is pending, hopefully we'll get it. And in the case, if we do, if we, if the town chooses not to move forward with our proposal, then we likely would not get that. And then we just put in a slide to show you so far, in case you're curious. You know, there's 177 communities that are part of this, this requirement. So far, 44 municipalities have approved the MBTA housing initiatives in their respective towns, going through the same process that, that we have here, trying to find a compromise that will work with their towns. Four towns have resisted so far. Of course, Milton's one of them, but Marshfield, Wakefield, Littleton as well, but their town meeting is scheduled for May 6th, so we don't know what's going to happen there yet. And then we have some time for questions, if anyone has questions.
I did want to add one comment.
Oh, yeah, please do.
It's, it's my understanding that this has to be, has to be approved by the town prior to the end of this calendar year.
Correct.
So that's.
Yeah, deadline's December 31st.
Right, so that is a deadline. So I just wanted to make sure everyone aware of that, that, you know, there is a clock ticking on this. It's, it's something that we've started quite a long time ago, and, and we put in a lot of work on this to, to really to kind of minimize the impacts to the town. And, and then I just want to say thank you for, thank you and Gary for putting these slides together.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Anything else that we missed?
Can we talk about the voting requirement at town meeting? It's not a typical zoning article that requires two-thirds majority?
Yeah, correct, right. So for this article, it requires just a simple majority vote. And a little bit different too, in terms of the adoption process, at least on the end. If it were to be approved, it goes to the Attorney General's office, which is what happens to our zoning bylaws. But in addition to that, this bylaw would go to the executive off of Housing and Liberal Communities, and they would evaluate to make sure it met the guidelines that they've put together in terms of guidance, how to adopt the provisions of the MBTA zoning. So there's two, two prongs to this that need to be approved before it was adopted, ultimately know if we comply with it.
But we did do all of the compliance models with that consultant that we had the, the grant funding for, so we expect that it would be able to.
Correct. Yep. I think it was a couple of other points just to raise, or to make people aware of, what we, the way we modeled this was the changes in terms of, in the B1 and the C1 Pondville area of town, the dimensional requirements that are there today, we built off of those. So lot size, setbacks, coverages, height, three-story maximum, which is there today, we built into this model. The change is really the unit, the unit count, so dwelling units per acre. Then of course, that this would have to be by right use in terms of multifamily. But when the, we, we looked at putting together how to approach this, we wanted to make sure that we kept the, the underlying zoning dimensional requirements, as well as the parking requirements as well, that we did. Which in turn, for people, just to know what that effect was, so our area is a little bit bigger than 50 acres, as you've probably heard earlier, 50 acres. But some land gets excluded, and when you take in our dimensional requirements, you have to yield out at least potentially 750 units. So that's why we have a little bit bigger area, which in total is 81 acres.
Which is used for the formula to make sure that we're compliant, but it doesn't mean that we have to build 750 units.
Right. There's a potential to build 750 units.
Yes, if all of the townhome neighborhoods that we already mentioned were razed to the ground, potentially. But I don't think that would happen.
And I think for the general public, it's also important to understand as well, to be informed about, is Title V, this development has to comply with Title V. So you, you have to meet Title V in terms of the septic system design, which again, that impacts real buildout versus potential buildout, as well as the Wetland Protection Act and our local wetland bylaws. So both of those come into play in terms of what actual buildout is. So this model does a theoretical buildout, but actual will be, could be far different in terms of what ultimately could happen.
Any other comments from the board before we open it up to the community?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so let's, anybody have any questions, comments? Yes, we have a couple. If you would like to grab a microphone, there's two microphones at the end of the table here, and then just state your name and your address. Whoever wants to go first. And then Rich, I guess you'll let us know if there's anybody's got a hand raised. I don't see any right now. Is the green, is the green light lit up? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Murphy. I live at Boyd's Crossing. I have a couple of questions. You talked about 114, 116 as properties that could be built. There is what wetlands in front of that, right? So if somebody were to put something in, it would be behind the wetlands there, right?
It would probably have to.
They could put in a high-rise. No.
No.
How can they go, how high?
Three stories.
Three stories.
Stories, which is still pretty high, which means they're looking over the property.
I mean.
In a way.
I mean, they could do that now.
Yeah. I mean, they could do that now without this MBTA zoning. They could do that right now.
All right. When you rezone, does that change the value of the property?
It does not. So we're actually, this is a good question. So we're not actually rezoning, we're adding zoning on top of the existing zoning. So we're not changing, actually, interesting enough, where you live override the zoning, so it's actually you on the, it's kind of interesting because you live in, so it's time of development, and 40B does override local zoning, ironically. So it's a little bit different. It's kind of an interesting question in some ways, because you're developing actually, where you live wouldn't be allowed under our zoning bylaws in terms of Boyd's Crossing.
Where we live now wouldn't have been?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because?
Because this is 40B.
40Bs, okay. You also mentioned the fire station, but you didn't mention any more of Main Street. Is it just up to the fire station?
It's just up to the, yeah. So if you see where the, my arrow is, that's the fire station there. So everything that's within that orange?
So the other side of the street would not be redevelop, or could not be re, well, I suppose I could tear it down anyway, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, so the other side of the street's in the R2 zoning, so whatever, whatever somebody wanted to develop under that. But that is not applicable to here, though.
Okay, okay.
Who's next? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, would you allow me to approach the board? I've got a lot of papers.
All right. Do you have handouts or?
I have a handout, but it's only five questions long.
Okay, let's, okay. Keep, keep it brief.
I will.
Just for the record, introduce yourself.
I will. Peter Diamond. I live on Secong Street in Norfolk. I've lived here all my life. My family owns one of the properties, the 114 Main Street. So maybe you could take one and pass that around. I'd say that Melissa and Gary did a good job on the presentation.
Thank you.
It clearly, clearly shows a lot of the things we really couldn't see in the past. And I guess my first question is, there's no change to the map this time? It's still the same?
Still the same.
Same map.
Yes, still the same map.
Yep.
Yes. All right, so I'll get into the questions, and I just did a pass out so you could follow along. And question one. In B1A, an applicant may develop multifamily housing, is what it says in the article for the zoning. Does this mean only multifamily housing is permitted? Can a developer build multiple single-family dwelling units on a lot in the MBTA overlay districts?
That is a really good question.
Multiple single-family units on a lot. So it would have to comply, I mean, I don't know if the math would work out for that.
Yeah, it's got to be 15 units to an acre.
Yeah.
It's got to be, so, no, no.
No, it's up to, it's up to.
That's the max.
So we'll take, for example, my family's property at 114 Main Street, which is one and a half acres times 18 is 27 units are permitted on that lot. Won't get them there because we don't have sewer, but.
Right. And you, and if it's got some wetlands on the lot.
Could it be multiple single families?
I guess we'd have to, what's the, we'd have to see how it's defined, how is.
And then, and then we have to think about Pondville Overlay 2, single families. You showed some lots there that are undeveloped.
Yep, yes, that's right.
And, and you know, could he do single-family dwellings as opposed to multifamily dwellings?
But I think that's the.
And I'll, I'll show you what I found.
The whole sewer thing comes into play there with regards to like how big.
Right.
So in looking at the zoning, in the B1, there's, there's no single-family residential housing permitted without commercial as part of the build, right? You need that 6535 generally.
In, yes.
So that's, that's what I came up with. In the Pondville District, which is, let's see, what did I come up with? C1D?
Off highway.
Off highway, okay. So in the Pondville District, in the C1D, that does allow for residential dwellings by special permit. And that's shown in 310-7.7, uses permitted in Pren 5, Pren A, special permit by the Planning Board. So it seems somewhat that it's permitted, and my concern rolls into question two.
Well, I think, so I think the answer, to answer question one is, I, you know, I think it comes down to the lot size, the sewer capacity, are there any wetlands? I, I mean, I'll be honest, I got to think about that one for a minute. I mean, it sounds like, yes, that would be permitted, is, is several single-family homes, but.
So the, the guidance document says in terms of multifamily housing.
I don't know.
Means a building of three or more residential dwellings, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling in each building.
Okay, so that right there. So there's your answer. So it could be, wait, so say that last part, two or more.
Two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling.
So they could be duplexes.
It could be duplexes.
They could be duplexes.
But it's still an overlay, so the underlying zoning still applies.
It does.
So they don't have to follow the overlay?
No, they don't, actually. Absolutely not.
That's right, yep, that's right. So I think that answers your question one. They have, they have more, they have more capabilities now with this, or they have different capability. I don't know if it's necessarily more, but.
Not going to be able to insert single-family, because that was part of the question, right?
I'm sorry, Rich.
It's that you were, the question started with, could they do single families, right?
Multiple single families.
Multiple single.
Multiple single families.
And, and.
So this would be no.
310-7.7, Pren 5, Pren A, it's, well, it's allowed by special permit, and C1D, A says residential dwellings at a density of not less than four units per 30,000 square foot or greater lot, and not more than one unit per 5,000 square feet of land.
So if somebody wanted to do that development versus this, they could.
Okay.
Because it sits on top of it, it's just additive.
All right. So that, that's where I roll into question two. In G, affordable housing, and one, all multifamily housing developments is called out, contain intent of more dwelling units. So it specifically says multifamily housing, and you've created a definition for that. So my concern here, that a developer could construct a property with multiple single-family dwelling units, and the 10% affordable housing requirement would not apply. Question?
No, because I think question one, we said we couldn't do the single families.
Well, question was, by special permit, you can do it in the C1D. So could he, developer, come in and say, I can do single-family dwellings according to 5A, thereby circumventing the requirement, because the new affordable housing for the overlay only applies to multifamily housing developments, is my question.
So I, my assumption is you can't pick and choose. If you're going to use the MBTA overlay district, you have to follow the guidelines for the whole, for that, that district. So in this situation, if you're just going to do multiple single-family dwelling units, then you would have to follow the town's inclusionary by.
Regular inclusionary zoning by.
So otherwise, if you're going to use the MBTA zoning district, you got to follow all the compliances of that.
Thank you. And question three, I do not see any language under H, affordable requirements for any payment in lieu or fee in lieu of construction of affordable units. What happens here? Is payment in lieu of construction of affordable housing an option in the overlay districts?
It's, my understanding, it's not, but I, I don't know, what, what was the direction from the AG or Town Council?
Is, uh, it's not an.
Don't see it addressed in the.
It's not an option.
It's, yeah, I was thinking it wasn't available, right? Yeah. So it's not an option, so that's why it's not included.
Okay. Now, question four, are the two definition changes and the four new definitions in 310-2.1 in this article, applicable to the whole town or just the MBTA overlay districts?
I mean, they, they should be just for this, but.
It's within this section.
Right, say that again.
It's within this.
Actually, it's going in the definition section, which is in, uh, the definitions.
So they're, they're in.
310-2.1.
They're applicable townwide.
They're applicable townwide, so the definition changed to, well, there's two new ones to begin, one, affordable housing.
Yep, those two are new.
As a right.
Yep.
Lot, it's just a change, you crossed out.
That's a change.
Quite a bit there because of, uh, the way, uh, multifamily housing chimes in on the whole thing, and then you got new definition for multifamily housing.
Yep.
Parking space new, and then you change residential dwelling unit.
Yep.
So those, those parts of, of the article on the warrant apply to the whole town.
Yes, that is correct.
Would we say that's the only part of this that applies to the whole town, or did I think some other parts apply to the whole town, as far as zoning? Okay, we got definitions, and then what's next? We have, uh, types of districts, and the zoning map.
Is specific to the, I mean.
Yeah, the change is specific to the MBTA.
Right.
Right.
And the zoning map just adds the overlay.
Yes, yep, that's right. So, yeah, so my original statement that I said earlier that this was just for the section for the definitions was not correct, it is for the whole town.
So I just, the Attorney General.
Nope.
And the Town Council reviewed this. And, uh, this, this rolls back to the question on the voting threshold for things in this article, and, uh, so there are parts of this that it may require two-thirds vote, because it's regular zoning.
It's.
Because it's an observation.
Yep, okay.
Okay, um, number five. I think there are just too many waivers built into the zoning change. In B1B, the planning board can waive any underlying zoning requirements. This is too broad of a permissive statement and needs detail and definition. In D, dimension requirements, the planning board can waive five sections of the zoning requirements. And in E1, the planning board can waive four sections of the requirements for off-street parking. Zoning is intended to be a set of regulations for development, and all the waivers leave the responsibility to a five-member planning board to decide.
Okay.
And then I just recommend a revision to G. I just want to put this out there, affordable housing in one as follows. One, in applicable projects in the THPMOD, whether new construction, substantial rehabilitation, expansion, reconstruction, or residential conversion, an applicable project, 15% of the housing units constructed shall be deed restricted, affordable housing, provided the town receives approval from EOHLC for the 15% requirement, period. If the town does not receive said approval, the requirement shall be reduced to not fewer than 10% affordable housing. I'm sure you people know I'm an advocate for affordable housing in town, I don't think there's enough. I'm sitting here asking for a higher percentage of affordable housing. It affects my family property. With an EFA, we might be able to get this, and I've, I've seen an adjoining community write this in their bylaw over in Meliss. And I, I think it should have been considered. That's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments from anyone in the room?
Yep.
Phil Zangy, Boyd's Crossing.
Is the light green on the microphone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the density requirement. I, I just wanted some clarification, is that a minimum or maximum requirement per acre? It would seem like it would be a minimum requirement in order to meet your, your numbers, right?
Let's see how it's written. Minimum, minimum gross density of 15 units per acre.
Okay, so if it's 15 units per acre, that answers the question about possible, single-family on properties, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Using this, using this overlay district, if you want to use this overlay district. Doesn't mean you have to use it, so this is an overlay district on a zone. So you can build to the original zoning bylaws of that district if you choose. This just gives you other options.
But on the Main Street properties, for example, which are currently single-family, you couldn't, you'd have to use, you'd have to be able, you'd have to comply with this district, correct?
No.
No.
Can you show the, yes?
Yeah, because he's asking about, you're asking about where, next to where you are, right?
Okay.
Right, but I wanted to show the differences between the two.
It has to meet the multifamily.
It'd have to meet the multifamily.
Which is what?
Which locate, I mean.
Can you show the?
So for the, obviously, the newer communities take those off the table, right?
Right, right.
But, um, some of the existing communities, like 112, 114 Main Street. If somebody were to want to develop that, and it was deemed an MBTA overlay district, they would have to have a minimum of 15 units per acre.
Oh, no.
No?
Right.
No, you, you're only gonna be able to build what you can build based on the setbacks, meeting the buffer requirements, Title V, and so forth, so.
Make it five, you might get eight. D1 here says the maximum allowable density is 18 units per acre for the THPMOD. This clearly says maximum.
18 is the maximum, 15 is the minimum, yeah.
The statute, the statute requirement is minimum 15 units per acre. Ours proposal is 18 units per acre.
So that we can keep the height down.
Because you're saying minimum, the statute is a minimum 15 units per acre.
I don't think we have 15 written, or I don't think we have a minimum written in here.
It's maximum.
Right, we have an 18 max.
I'm going back to the slide that Gary presented, that said that we comply with one of the, you know, the three. And one of them was that, that 15. It would seem in order to hit your 750 threshold, you would have to have some popu, you know, some, some pretty good densities. Right, you wouldn't be able to allow just one or two units per acre in order to hit your number.
So the 750 was used as a formula, so we had to basically say, this lot is one acre, therefore it can have a minimum of 15 units, and then, you know, the next one is two acres, well, that can have 30. And so it's basically just the 750 was never really, it was required to be fulfilled in the model, but it was never required for us to build 750, it was just the potential of the land.
Okay.
With the acreage that we have available, but that, of course, if we have wetlands or other things, and it's not possible, then they wouldn't be able to do it.
Okay, so.
So essentially, thinking of it this way. The land is vacant, okay? Blank sheet of paper minus the welling areas, because those can't be calculated. Your zoning had to be able to theoretically have that unit capacity of 750 units. Again, doesn't mean you're gonna get 750 out of it, because you have to comply with the other provisions.
And those other provisions didn't go into the calculation of the 750, right?
The.
The Title V.
Right, it wasn't a parcel-by-parcel basis to make sure you maxed out every parcel, I guess if that's, maybe I'm not explaining it that well.
This is like, ultimately, future potential over decades of time. We might be able to get to a 750 if a lot of things happen and there's a lot of change. Let's say we get enough sewer to support 750, because there's no way we're gonna ever get to 750 on septic systems alone. You know, if we change anything with regards to setbacks or anything like that, there's a lot of other things that need to happen, if some of the wetlands dried up, you know, that might free up some space, but a lot of these things are possibilities.
The only other question I had was, I noticed there was no properties within the town hill proper, like the actual center of town.
With the intent of keeping it mixed-use to have retail on the bottom and residential on top.
So that was where we, we looked at doing the mandatory mixed-use, because we knew that we wanted to have that downtown. And so we thought if we could include that in our zoning, then we could get the residential units that were required to have, and then still have that bottom layer for the small businesses that, you know, we would love to build that out for. They would not allow that, so that's why we had to go outside of that, because we didn't want to allow just the residential to be in town hill area, so that we would end up with a huge apartment building on the town green area. Our, um, bylaws were too restrictive, our town bylaws, so we have, for downtown, we have a ratio of 35% to, versus 65%. So 35 commercial, 65 residential. That was not able to comply, and we also require parking for the non-commercial units as well, so it didn't comply for that reason as well.
Comes onto the calculation again.
Yeah.
When you're trying to get the density that you're looking for.
Any questions?
No. No hands on Zoom. There's something wrong.
Kathleen Fox, 61 Boardman Street. Is it, my understanding, the state doesn't allow businesses on the first level? Or that they don't allow you to require it?
Right, so they won't allow us to require mixed-use, but the person who builds the property can choose to do that.
Okay, all right. And my other question is, if the overlays are approved at town meeting, it still has to go to the state for approval? And if they don't accept parts of it, or what, then what happens?
Well, hopefully, uh, if, if there was some issue, we might have to go back to town meeting, but we did, consultant that we hired, Horace, to, to build the model, build the zoning, was based on the guidance that the state executive office, executive office of housing and living communities put together, um, in terms of how they, the guidance was written. Nothing's, uh, we have a high degree of competence, have to consult with a consultant, that we, we should be able to, we should be able to get this approved, and the point, and one of the things is, we did, we left the little wiggle room, there are towns, if you really try to go right to the minimums, you could run the risk of not complying, so we have a little bit of buffer.
For example, the 50-acre minimum, where, where we exceed that, so we have that buffer.
As well as the 18 units per acre versus 15.
Versus 15, so we, we tried to exceed it where, when it was reasonable to give us a little buffer. The AG has already reviewed it, not guaranteed they'll approve it, but they reviewed it, provided comments, which we've integrated. That's why we're having a second, uh, public hearing on it. So, can't guarantee that it will pass, you know, say the town passed it, can't guarantee this, the AG would pass it, but we've, like Rich said, we feel confident they will. And if they don't, then we'll get the feedback, and we would be back here for fall, because the deadline is at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the other towns that have already passed it last year, if you look at the report, the, uh, the letters from the AG, the AG was fine with a lot of these, but they said, hey, what, you know, maybe that executive office might not be fine with it, so the, the executive office housing and living communities is really the, a lot of towns is where it could be issues, but, again, we built it based on the guidance.
Yep. Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
All right, any last comments from the board? All right, so I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Is it moved?
Do we have a sec, do we have a second? Uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Chris Marvort.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it's unanimous to close the public hearing. Uh, we now need to, are there any other further discussion based upon the comments that we heard this evening? Any, any further discussion on this, or any modifications that we feel we need to make? Okay, uh, all right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to recommend this article as printed, it says 26, but it's really 25 in the warrant, because the warrant was renumbered. Recommend this for, for town meeting here on May, what's it, the 15th?
Is it moved?
Second.
I will do a, we, it has been moved and seconded, we'll do a roll call vote, Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Chris Marvort.
Aye.
Eric Diamond.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So it is moved and approved. So that ends our 7:00 PM public hearing. Okay, we are, we'll give everybody in the room, if you would, we would love it if you would stay, we are gonna be, um, having a quick presentation here, uh, from Bill Buckley with GFI Partners for the Southwood Hospital, uh, property. And, um, well, if you would like to go, we'll give everybody a minute or two while Bill gets set up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
We just have to wait. Uh, Bill's gonna be joining us via Zoom for his presentation, and, uh, there you go.
I think it's waiting for you, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Well, that gets you right up front.
Just make sure you shut your audio off, please.
You wanna lower your computer volume as well? Perfect.
All right, your major co-host, you should have, uh.
Mut, mute.
Yeah, mute, mute, yeah. You let us know, Bill, when you're ready, and I'll, uh, you can just give yourself, introduce yourself, who you're with, and.
Great. It's. Is it being shared? Yep.
Yes, it is being shared, yes. You can see it in the, okay.
Great.
All right, so we do have this evening, we have Bill Buckley with GFI Partners, um, so he's gonna give a presentation on the, uh, Southwood Hospital site.
Right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, thank you for the opportunity, as always, to be here. Uh, we've been looking forward to this meeting, and, um, you know, we've really appreciated the opportunity to work with, um, with the board in the past, and with town staff in particular, uh, both Rich and our town administrator, um, Justin. Tonight, we're here, um, I think the last time we left the planning board, we talked about after the zoning analysis, we said, we need a project, right, let's, uh, let's come up with a project for the site, so. This is, um, I think this is a great way tonight to kick off the project, we have, um, we want to introduce you to, to 111 Dedham Street. We have, we want to introduce you to, to 111 Dedham Street and, you know, really provide some, some information to you and solicit any feedback that you have on the project. I know it's getting late, so I'm going to try to keep this to about 20 minutes and see where we go from there. But it occurred to me, so I would, I think through the introduction, it occurred to me as I was putting this presentation together, that I don't know that we've ever really formally introduced GFI to, to the town or to the board. So I'm going to provide a little information about the developer. I intend to provide a site overview of existing conditions. You know, what we talk about a lot is that, and I, and I think that's important and relevant to this discussion because we've been saying all along that site remediation and the assessment work out there needs to run parallel with the identification and the redevelopment project so that we know at the end of all that work, there's a, there's a project there that, that benefits all parties. I do want to touch upon the zoning analysis that was, that was presented to the board back in October because that really served as kind of the backdrop of our, of the design of our project and we really followed some of the, some of the guidelines that were provided in that. And I thought we'd just briefly talk about next steps and be available to answer any questions that you have. Little bit about GFI. GFI Partners is, we're a Boston-based real estate development firm and I, I should say that I'm joined tonight by Brian Poitras, Director of Capital Markets. Other members of our team are out at a public hearing in Shrewsbury tonight. GFI Partners is a full-service real estate development firm. We permit, construct, own and manage our entire portfolio. That portfolio includes over 17 million square feet of real estate across several asset classes, and that's industrial, residential, behavioral health and education. And we are actively permitting and constructing in the development pipeline more than 8 million square feet of space currently. You get a sense of some of our portfolio, portfolio of tenants there, as I, as I mentioned, across multiple industries from, you know, life sciences and biopharmaceuticals to energy industries and, you know, warehouse and distribution in, across multiple asset classes. A couple, just a kind of a brief overview of some active development projects and kind of a sampling of, representative sampling of current, of projects we currently have. Some are similar in size, some larger than, than what might be proposed here. Out in Goshaun, New York, we're working with Royal Wine, who's a producer and distributor of kosher wines, really kind of a special industry, specialty industry. Life is Good has consolidated their operations at a project that we have under construction, nearing completion up in Hudson, New Hampshire. Over in Devens, Mass, I have to, looking at myself here. Over at Devens, Mass, Advantor is a, in the biotech pharmaceutical industry there occupying our project over in Saratoga Boulevard in, in Devens. In Bill Ricker, we're working with Azenta, which is a life sciences company, I think recently occupied that space, right? They moved in. In, in Brockton, we're working with Air Energy LLC, which is an air and vacuum systems company for the industrial and life sciences industries. And one of our new projects that was recently announced is PI, it's a manufacturer of high precision products that's used in the technology and high-tech industries. A little more about GFI is that we take great in pride in our history of working in community settings and improving challenging sites, which brought us to Dedham Street, right? We know this is a challenging site. A little overview of the site. Dedham Street is, well, the site itself is 96 acres or so, former home of Southwood Hospital. It, as it sits within the kind of a regional context, it butts the Walpole Fields off of Dedham Street, the newly constructed athletic fields. It's nearly across the street or just to the north of the site is, is the now closed Cedar Junction, MCI Cedar Junction. To kind of the southwest, to the west is really open space, it's part of state property. To the southwest is, is, you know, the 115, 1A intersection, which is, you know, it has an existing light industrial, small commercial base in, in the town of Norfolk, including, you know, maybe it's like a similar sized project to what, what we might be proposing at the, at Joffre and Way. As far as the crow flies, not a, not a big distance to get over to Gillette and Patriot Place, right? And all the businesses that exist along Route 1. The site itself, I'm just going to touch upon this, it's, I want to point out where the sewage treatment area is on the site as well as the existing landfill. You can see kind of the, the background of, or you can see the, kind of the underlying existing Southwood Hospital property. That strip of land along the top of, of the map is the old rail line, which now is, is part of, part of the parcel and part of the 97 acres. And, you know, most of what we see on the left of the site is, is upland and, and available for development. There are some wetlands in kind of this corner of the site over near Valley and Hill Streets, but another significant upland area just, just above the sewer treatment facility. The existing conditions on the site, if, if you've, if you've been out there recently are, are not positive, right? It's, when Southwood Hospital closed, I guess that's a nice way of saying it, right? When Southwood Hospital closed in 2003, 2004, we're nearing 20 years of vacancy there. We knew we were buying a property that, that had some challenges, but the, you know, the existing building is boarded up. We've been, you know, having to patrol the site pretty regularly to, to be sure that we, that we keep the site secured and safe. It's in, you know, it's in a difficult, a difficult position right now, right? The site is kind of screaming for redevelopment. We knew that, that there was a significant site assessment and remediation work to, to begin there. We initially embarked upon that. This, when it operated as a state hospital, so just a little history here, it became a state hospital for cancer treatment in about 1927, really, and operated, you know, under state ownership from 1927 till the early 1980s. I think 1982 is when it changed hands to, I think Neshoba Medical Center and which became, or Southwood Medical Center, which became part of the Caritas Christie chain, part of the, part of the Stewart family of hospitals. I guess it's, you know, it's safe to say, and most of what exists out there actually happened during state ownership of the site, right? So there's, you know, we know there's an existing landfill that I pointed out on the site, those wastewater treatment beds. We knew there was some closeout that was necessary there, but since we've owned the site, we've become aware that there is, is radioactive materials and radiation that's sourced there. That came as a bit of a surprise to us and is kind of, I don't want to say it's altered our approach, but we've, we've definitely, you know, it's, it's another hurdle that we, that we're going to need to cross in, in the redevelopment of this project. I will say, and, you know, on all those issues, we're communicating with, with Mass D E P, right? We're working with a neighborhood PIP group, which I'll, which I'll touch upon later in the presentation. And even with all that in mind, right, we're, we're committed to this project, right? We are, we've been, you know, actively participating, actively working on site assessment and identifying remediation objectives. I mean, we're not done yet. When we took ownership of the site in, in 2021, we, we, you know, we're immediately prepared a, a final PIP plan, right? To work with, a PIP plan is a public improvement plan, so to involve public involvement in your, in the identification of a cleanup strategy. We were notified of the radiological assessment. I'm going to try not to get into the weeds on all of this, on all the site assessment and remediation. Essentially, there's been, you know, a significant investment made by GFI in the assessment and, you know, identification of, of hazardous materials on the site. But I, I should report here that there's, there's a lot more work to be done, right? There's, and actually a significant amount of work. There's monitoring wells, there's further radiation analysis, groundwater sampling. We have PFAS assessment that needs to be done out there, an ecological risk assessment, human health assessments and, you know, a whole host. There are, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional site assessment work before we can even, you know, develop what would be kind of a phase four, phase five remediation strategy out there. We have been recently informed that, that the site and the project would be eligible for EPA, Environmental Protection Agency targeted brownfields assessment funding. So we're pursuing that and, you know, Rich has offered us, Rich and Justin have been, have been helpful in making us, making that project available to us. It's important to touch upon that, that remediation because as I, I'll repeat myself a bit here, you know, the remediation and the redevelopment of the, of the site need to go hand in hand, right? With the costs that, that assessment remediation present, you know, there needs to be, and I've said it in, in this room, there needs to be a robust redevelopment strategy that can support those costs. We're committed to completing the assessment work and, you know, we want to identify a project that, that can complement that. We think we have. We've, we've, I do want to introduce you to, to what was, you know, our proposed industrial park project at the 111 Dedham Street site. It's a conceptual site plan, kind of just showing a layout of what we, you know, what we initially worked on and to identify, you know, potential redevelopment strategy on the site. I want to stress, you know, before we get into, before I get into any detail, that this is, this is a conceptual layout only, right? It's, we have, you know, significant engineering work remaining to be done on the site with initiated new survey. We have a civil engineer on board. You know, a final site plan as presented to this board would include, you know, stormwater, utilities, traffic analysis, sound analysis, you know, a full team of experts would, would provide, you know, plan refinement and all the studies necessary as, that you would expect. What is shown here is, we've, and we're showing the site is in three different parcels, right? Breaking up the 96 acres. This, there is a single, what we call an industrial lot A of about 74 acres in size. Commercial lot B at about four acres, having redevelopment potential as well as commercial lot C, which is a total of 18 acres. Some of it is, will, will be impacted by wetlands, so, but opportunity for additional commercial development on those parcels. Few project highlights that we just want to share is, so the industrial park is, is laid out as 545,750 square feet, multi-tenant, Class A, state-of-the-art industrial park on the 74 acres. The park will be designed to accommodate a mix of light industrial, manufacturing, office, storage and warehouse uses and, you know, kind of representative of some of the buildings that we showed earlier. You know, we would work on having a welcoming landscaped entrance. It would be new construction buildings with modern design features and amenities, be dedicated tenant office spaces, tenant loading areas. I mentioned commercial lots B and C is accommodating, you know, additional maybe neighborhood retail or other neighborhood commercial, commercial uses. I am going to touch upon the fiscal impact projections of this project where we show annual revenues, tax revenues to the town of Norfolk exceeding a million dollars annually. And of course, you know, I wanted to go without saying that, you know, a project of this magnitude would be subject to, you know, detailed traffic impact analysis. This project in particular would be subject to a mass, mass highway access permit. So, you know, we anticipate significant analysis of the, of the, of the traffic in the area. I think, I think it is important to note though, that in our experience, industrial park uses such as this are on kind of the lower end of commercial traffic projections, right? It's the, you know, you're going to have much lower projections as opposed to retail and some of the other higher traffic uses. We would, as part of our site plan, we would incorporate protected open space. I think in particular, there's areas off of Valley and Hill Street. It's an opportunity for us and for the town to work with the Metacom at Greenway. We've kept that, that rail line property available for future Greenway opportunities should we, as we, again, as we work together. And I was, I've been told by others in the community that it's important to point out that this is not a fulfillment center warehouse, right? That's, it's, that's, that's not what's being proposed here. Yeah, it is difficult in, as a, as a, as a board member or boards and commissions, it's difficult to really kind of get a good feel in a, in a, in just a, a plan drawing such as that, especially of the conceptual nature. It's difficult to really envision and understand the context of how a project of that size fits on that site and, and how it interacts with the budding properties in the neighborhood. So we've, we've, you know, we've been working, we've kind of identified a great tool in image, you know, to work with and a consultant that can really help us create images that can, that I think are real helpful to the, to the, to the boards and commissions to understand, okay, how, you know, how is this project? How does it, how does it interact with the neighborhood? How does, how does, how does the site function? So kind of touching upon the regional context again of this site, you see the, the MCI Cedar Junction, we see the Walpole Fields. We get a sense comparison wise to kind of some of the industrial buildings down off of, is that Pine Street where it's 115?
Yep.
Joffre and Way and I think that's Four Kicks.
Four Kicks, yep.
Yep. And others there. So as we, you know, taking these images a little further, right, we can kind of start to see how, how the project interacts with employee parking and visitor parking on the site. One of the, one of, one of the design features that we try to incorporate is that we try to separate vehicular and truck traffic for, you know, although, and I should call it, you know, in loading areas, right, for kind of safe access in and out of the site. Depending on how Mass DOT reacts to this, we're actually showing a, a main entrance of the site here and then a potential secondary entrance for, for loading traffic. Kind of when we, and as you can also start to see some of how the storefronts work here and where we're, where we're considering this multi-tenant space. And in, in this visual, you know, this is really conceptual only, but this is, we anticipate this to have really a, you know, a function as an industrial park, right? With multi-tenants, a mix of business uses, a mix of industries located within there. As I, with this being conceptual, right, the final mix, these buildings are designed so it can accommodate several different mixes of space or configurations of space, right? There, the, some of these may be joined, they may be split, so that's, that's kind of to be determined as we get into, into leasing in the market. What's, what I should have pointed out too in the original site plan is one of the, one of, what I think is one of the interesting things about this site is it's, it's tiered. So these buildings, one and two are sitting, you know, on a, on a level higher than what would be building three. So there's kind of a retaining wall here and a landscaped buffer that, that's this building three parking area sits, sits a little lower than those buildings one and two. And you can, at that main entrance would actually traverse down to that parking area. It, I, I mention that because I think it, from a site design, and we'll look at this from a site design standpoint, it breaks up the massing of the buildings somewhat, right? And it kind of takes away, it adds from a, from a visual standpoint, it takes away kind of from this just sea of parking and pavement, right? As we, as we start to get kind of, you know, really closer to it, to, you know, imagining how the, how the, how the park would work, this is, this would be the main entrance off of Dedham Street. As I mentioned, we would, you know, we would, we would go out of our way to make this a welcoming landscaped entrance. We would want to generate kind of the curb appeal, curb appeal that's capable of supporting, you know, a corporate headquarters at this location or, you know, or, you know, a, a location that is going to be attractive to, to tenants. So as we're coming up Dedham Street, this would be the view coming from Walpole down Dedham Street. Here's kind of a, an image of what would be the first building on the left. You know, this, the conceptual, the conceptual building height, I think these buildings are shown at about 36 feet high or at least would have 36 foot clear within the, within the buildings, clear height. But, you know, the fact that it's new construction and, you know, new site work, the site would be equipped with, you know, modern amenity, modern amenities such as, you know, electric vehicle charging stations and. vehicle charging stations and, you know, probably both, you know, for the tenants and their customers. And the buildings would have state-of-the-art and efficient mechanical systems throughout. This is building one. Building two, so building one would be just to the left of this, sitting on the same plane. And building three, you can, you can almost feel it, you can see the change in grade there, right? That that parking level is sitting down below and there's a, again, an opportunity for a landscape buffer and retaining wall to kind of break up that grade. We went through several iterations of this plan and, you know, moved buildings around and talked about different, different uses for the site. And this is, it's kind of where we settled as a conceptual layout to present to the board and start to solicit some of your, some of your feedback. We hope to present it to the select board as well and hopefully next Monday.
Monday.
Yeah. But we, you know, we relied on, and actually, and it was helpful because we were, we were here and we participated in some of the reuse and zoning analysis, right? And I was, I picked just a couple of those slides to talk about, you know, what that, what that study did was identified, you know, put together a group of matrix and I don't want to, you know, I think Josh did, I think Josh and Rich did a really good job, right? And a credit to that staff in identifying, you know, really what are viable development scenarios out there, right? And viable from a standpoint of, you know, what can support the mix of goals and, you know, the metrics that we, that we use to grade those for the site. So, you know, with, although major residential developments and modest-scale residential, you know, with unit mixes up to 300, 400 units, we, the more we looked at the site, we just, we kind of said this, this is, this is a good, this is a great industrial park site, right? And I guess, you know, it's, not to mention that it's, it's what we do at GFI really well, right? Although we, you know, we could have envisioned other development scenarios here, it's, this is within our wheelhouse, right? It's what we do, we do really well. And I'd go as far as to say, and I think Brian would support me on this, is, you know, we do it better than anyone in the region. In following those, those metrics, I just wanted to quickly identify those, right? And that's, you know, those metrics and we check a lot of those boxes, right? We, we, you know, with, with appropriate remedial strategy, we do think that the project is financially feasible, right? Assuming we can manage those remedial costs. We know this market and we know that, we have significant experience in this market and we know there's market potential. We, we, this project, you know, as we move along and as we follow parallel paths here, this project will result in a permanent solution for the remediation of the site, achieve a level of no significant risk, which is really what we're required to do. And that's no significant risk to human health, the environment. And from a traffic standpoint, I talked a little bit about that, it's, you know, we will, we know that that's, that that's something that's going to be thoroughly analyzed, right? We're confident that this is in the, in the right location and can, and can manage that traffic. We've already had a, some preliminary due diligence traffic analysis done. I'm going to share with you some municipal fiscal impact projections that we think is, you know, results in a real positive story and a real win-win for the community. It will, the project will, you know, will create jobs, right? There'll be, there'll be new jobs in this community. So, I think we, you know, I, I think we can, you know, with a straight face, say that we meet, you know, six out of seven of those metrics, right? And the one that we're not doing is we're, the project's not proposing to produce any affordable housing, right? And that's, we just don't see it as compatible with the, with the uses. But, you know, there's, there's still the commercial parcel that could, that could be considered. Oh, good. Fiscal impact projection. So we did, we have a consultant that we, that we work with who, you know, we can provide additional, additional data on this. But we, you know, taking a look at what was proposed as the 545,000 square foot industrial park and really just that property alone, right? That's not factoring in anything for the commercial lots A or B, right? And there's, because there's, there's significant opportunity there as well for, you know, kind of modest-scale commercial uses on site. But not taking those into consideration, we're projecting annual tax revenues to the town of a million 35,000, that's $887 annually. The existing valuation of the, of the Southwood site is currently at 5,524,000. We would project that that assessed value grow to a little more than $66 million for that site. And that's actually reflected in the, in the graph that's shown there. But I do have to confess that I made a little mistake on that. So that should be one notch down. So it's still a very compelling graph to utilize, but I got a little aggressive.
Let's see that.
So, I just don't want anyone calling me out on that. You know, along the fiscal impact story, it's, is, you know, the existing industrial valuation in the town of Norfolk would almost quadruple this project, right? We would go from an existing total industrial valuation of a little over $22 million to, by adding in that 66 million to, you know, up to approaching 90 million in industrial valuation. We would estimate approximately 300,000 in permitting fees for the project. And I was told that there's, Community Preservation Act revenue is of 1%, so that would be, you know, annual CPA revenue of $10,359. The project, the industrial park project alone is projected at new economic development investment of $55 million. And as I mentioned, there's the potential for 350 new employees, which, you know, we think strengthens the, you know, the entire local economy. Is another couple of, a couple of images that, so this is at the back of the site, actually. We would, you know, often we, we come across, you know, in working in a, in a kind of a park concept like this, often we, we hear from boards and commissions and others and Jesus, from our tenants alone, you know, is there employee gathering spaces or something? So we've incorporated that kind of early into the project. And this would, you know, what the final design of a rail trail or the Metacom at Greenway and how that would interact and, you know, safety and security issues, you know, that's all kind of to be determined, but this would be, you know, this would, this would be close to that line.
Just needs a spot for a food truck.
For a food truck, right? Exactly. Yeah, right. And, and I think that, that just, you know, brings me to kind of next steps, right? And then, and open it up for some feedback to the board. I mean, from our standpoint, we want to, you know, we intend to continue to invest in site assessment and remediation activities and, you know, as, as we identify, with the radiation, for instance, as we identify new issues, right? We're going to be seeking what's available for, for brownfields programs and, you know, identifying what, what resources are available to us. We want to continue to work with, with the PIP group, right? They have, they've provided us with some very good feedback over the, over the course of the site. I wanted to mention, I know I had made a point about them, but, you know, we've benefited by, by working with them. There's a lot of institutional knowledge that they've provided. They know the area well. There's some members in the PIP group that I think may have even worked on the site at, at one point when it was in operation. So, we really appreciate their institutional knowledge and the feedback that they've, they've provided us. And we're, we're committed to continue to work with them as a kind of public involvement in the cleanup plan. Actually, our, we just scheduled our next PIP meeting where I'm hoping to present, or at least give them a, maybe not the same length, but at least give them a snapshot of the project. It's May 23rd will be our next PIP, next PIP meeting. We want to continue to work with them. We want to continue to invest in, in site engineering and design, right? So we've had crews out there just, just the last couple of weeks, we've been updating all our, our base plans. We've, we've been out there re-flagging the wetlands. We've had a surveyor out there identifying, you know, the project boundaries. We're doing, you know, identifying the topography of the site. And, you know, we want to continue to, to, to have that civil engineering moving forward so that we're ready for, ready for a project. And, you know, I think what really important for us in working with the, with the town now is that, you know, we're here tonight to kind of introduce you to the project and hoping that, that we can begin a discussion to initiate a rezoning process for the piece, right? To, to, you know, ideally, or at least we've, we've talked internally and mentioned to Rich, would, you know, would love to, to have something ready for, for later this year, you know, based on your feedback and, and your willingness to move forward. We, you know, we, we think that that's an important next step for us, right? To be able to continue to, to invest in the site assessment and the engineering. We, we're hoping to see some progress towards that, towards that rezoning. You know, next steps, we would, you know, with, with that rezoning initiative, we think there's, you know, that would be an opportunity for community engagement and outreach and, you know, really, really continue to work with the board on that. And, you know, and, you know, working together, identifying kind of a parallel path to, you know, permitting, cleanup of the site, and eventual construction of the project. That's going to be it. And, yeah, so I'm here and I'm sure, we happy to answer some questions?
Please, yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I just, yeah, this was great. It was really exciting to see your concept there. And, you know, I appreciate that you, you've engaged with the PIP group, you've engaged with the community, you've engaged with the town to make it a, you know, we truly so far has been a partnership, so I just want to thank you for that. And I think that's going to be key to the success, continue to do that, especially that community engagement you mentioned is going to be key. This, you know, this is a, you know, a unique site to the town. There's a lot of cleanup there as you're aware of and...
The town deserves to have, have this site cleaned up.
Yes.
It really, you know, it's, it's a shame the condition that that site has, has stayed in for, for as long as it has, right?
Yes. Very true. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you had showed like, kind of like three lots, A, B, C.
Yeah.
Is it your intention to, to develop lot A first and then, and then B and C later?
We, yes. The answer to that question is yes, right? And, you know, as part of kind of the community engagement and outreach, I mean, if we identified uses that were appropriate for, you know, lot A and, I mean, for lot B and lot C, at that time, we would move forward. We would, we would hope that the rezoning analysis actually includes potential commercial uses on those parcels, right? But we would, yeah, this is an industrial park project first and foremost, right? So it's, you know, for us to, that, it would be, you know, a little bit of the tail wagging the dog if we, if we focus too much attention on lots B and C, right? This is, it's the industrial park project that really, really drives our pro forma and drives our ability to conduct the remediation of the site.
Okay. And then do you have kind of some thoughts on what you're looking to, to develop on lots B and C?
You know, I, like, I, I've, and I think I've said this with Rich, like, lot C, right? Which is the 18-acre piece, right? Like, Pondville, Pondville Medical Center, right? You can see right on, right on...
So lot C is that area that's cleared for the most part?
Lot C is right here, right? Right there.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, Pondville, I think it's called Pondville Medical Center, right?
It is, yep.
Wouldn't that just fit perfectly on there, right? You know, maybe something along those lines or, you know, maybe there's a neighborhood retail or, you know, something that, so, you know, I could see, I could see a mix of potential, potential uses there, right? Maybe, and, and again, that shouldn't, well, we won't, we'll, we'll, we won't want that to drive the agenda, really, right? We'll just keep, keep options open and, you know, that is probably where there's the most opportunity for kind of community feedback on what's, what's really needed in that, in that area and that region. I mean, it's, it's an interesting area now because you have, someday, I got to go by and see how many people are at that, there got to be thousands of people at that, those wall pole sports fields.
Wall pole, oh, yeah.
On the course of a weekend or something, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's, that, that creates some real opportunity and we're going to have, you know, 350 new jobs here. So what, what might work there, what might not work there today as a, as a commercial development site, you know, maybe more attractive down the road once we've established, you know, 350 new jobs here and employees and, you know, in, in consideration of the, you know, the growth of those wall pole fields. So, you know, I think we'll be open to, to discussion on those, on those pieces, community needs.
Okay. I know you're doing a, I mean, at some point you'll have to do a traffic analysis.
Yep.
Some of the things I just saw in your renderings, and again, they were renderings. I, I mean, and this will come out in the traffic analysis is that turn lanes in and out of the business park, they weren't on the renderings. Mike would say you'll probably need those, but that's where the traffic analysis comes in.
We'll most likely need that.
Yeah. And then any other, you know, intersection improvements.
Yep.
That would be, that would be required because of the traffic analysis.
On my, on my, on my way here tonight, I took some time to actually look at the 115, 1A intersection there. I mean, there's been, it's, the intersection has been improved. I don't know how, how recently that is with left turn lanes, but I, it's my understanding though, there are still some movements there that, that don't function as, as high as, as well as they could.
Right. Some of those turning movements may need to be improved, that the timing of the light might need to be changed.
Yep.
Yeah. That'll come all out.
Those are, those are all things that we, we would anticipate, you know, probably an entire night of hearing of, of discussion on.
And then again, with the, once it goes into engineering, you'll need to reach out to the fire chief and the police chief. I do know they like a perimeter road around the buildings.
Yes, we're actually showing that.
Okay.
It's, I'm showing it as a grass, as what they call a grass creek.
Okay.
Let's see if it picks up.
Yeah, let's point that out then. Maybe, was that the...
It's kind of shown, it's shown here, right?
Okay.
And actually, in the, in the picnic area, you can see kind of the grass creek.
Yeah, can you go back to that picture?
Yeah.
I think I know what you mean, yeah. It's a...
And that's, that was anticipating that comment in particular, that's why that...
Yeah, so that black hatch, that's grass creek, okay.
So that would, that would, that would allow access around the buildings, right?
Okay.
And, you know, we'll, that's something we'll work with the fire department on.
Yep.
I mean, these, the newer construction buildings like this have such, such new technology with fire suppression systems and sprinkler systems that it's, you know, sometimes fire, fire departments and fire chiefs are, are, you know, willing to be flexible on that or maybe, you know, might look for, might look for enhanced features in exchange for, you know, less of, less of a fire.
How did, what do you do with that grass creek in the winter? Do you plow that? Or, I mean, again, that would have to be if it's a required access road, I mean, obviously you'd have to maintain that all, through all the seasons.
Yep. So you're getting into management.
I know, I'm getting, I'm getting too deep, I know.
You know, as you know, my background is in municipal planning, right? So it's...
I'm sorry, I'm getting deep.
So I, but, but it would need to, it would need to be ma, it would need to be maintained, right?
Yeah.
And I think those are plowable, it's, you know, that would clearly be something that we would...
Just bringing up some concerns that will possibly be coming your way down the road.
Yep.
So we don't have to address those all tonight.
Excellent, yep.
Yep. And then I'm sure you're aware there is that, the deed restriction on the, on the property there that would have to go to a town meeting.
Yeah, so I, yeah, it's, we've had mixed, mixed reviews on whether it's town meeting or a board of selectmen or, or what. So, I was actually going to, I had it on, I had it on one of, I had it on that last slide for next steps and, you know, I'm kind of, that's, you know, I'm considering that, that's, that's something that's going to be handled kind of with the rezoning, right?
Yeah. So yeah, let's, let me restate that. There is a deed restriction that needs to be adjusted and there, and, and we're not 100% sure of if we need a town meeting or not on that, but...
What we do know is that we need an act of the legislature at the state in order to, so, so what the, what, what we do know is that the state would be looking for the support of the town.
Right.
In order to process that, that legislative action.
Right.
And whether or not that support is a town meeting vote or a board of selectmen, I mean, I, we'll, you know, it's my opinion, we'll leave that to the, kind of to the attorneys to decipher, right?
That's well said, yes. So.
I think what's important for me is that we're not only gaining tenants in the buildings itself, but we're gaining GFI as a, you know, a meaningful partner in the town as well and for the long term. You're not coming in here to develop something and walk off and move on. You're not coming in here to develop something and walk off and move on to the next project.
Yeah, I'm glad you made that point.
That to me is very important. As a father of four kids, you know, I hope that they stay in Norfolk and raise their families here, knowing that someone who's staying in the community and developing it for a positive use makes me comfortable.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up that point because this is definitely something that we would envision holding in our portfolio and owning and managing and leasing throughout.
I live in Oakdale, I have a lot of friends in Oakdale.
Can you grab a microphone thing?
Or just sit right next to them.
Or sit next to them, because, yeah.
I live in Oakdale, I have a lot of friends here in Oakdale, so yeah. And I just was looking, you can plow that stuff, though.
Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, that's also-
Say, you already have a plan, potential plan for water to the site?
Well, we, we've, we had initial conversations, we know that there's availability, there's availability of town water, right? So kind of another thing that, that kind of guided us towards an industrial use is, you know, depending on what industries actually locate there and what tenants, right, they don't necessarily need to be high water users, right? Like, that might have been more of a concern with kind of, with some, if we, if we had gone in a residential direction or, so, you know, that is, water and, and the treatment of, of the wastewater kind of are going to be two things that are, that are top of mind and front and center here as we, as we advance these plans, right? It was, it's important to get this initial feedback, so we know that we can, you know, what we go back and really dig our, dig our hands into is, you know, something that's been-
Are you alluding to like gray water treatment and reuse?
Well, we got to figure out where, where the source is, is going to go or come from, right?
Uh huh.
Whether that's on site or, you know, if there are other opportunities there. So that's, that's something that we'll, we're kind of actively looking into right now.
Okay. That was it for my questions. Questions, comments? And I know I went in the weeds on some of them, but-
Oh, that's good.
Any other comments, questions from board members?
I really, I like the way it looks. I think it's a good location for something like that. We do have some kind of light industrial down further, you know, beyond that set of lights and the traffic in that area isn't always amazing and I drive this way a lot and I feel like that would be a lot better, but we'll see what the traffic study says. That's just my observation from driving down there every single day. But it, it looks really nice. I love that you're thinking about the design and the aesthetic of the building and just having it tiered, you know, some developers would just do whatever is the cheapest and just go with that, but you're actually thinking about the landscaping and having it tiered so it doesn't, it's not just one massive center.
Yep.
And I appreciate that.
Yep. I will say on the, on the traffic, so what, you know, one of the things that we, in our preliminary discussions with traffic, one of the, one of the, from a traffic standpoint, one of I think the benefits of this site is that there are multiple routes to and from the site, right? So traffic leaving the site could go straight on 1A, left on 115, you know, and there's, there's enough kind of proportion, there's, there's, there'll be enough trips utilizing multiple routes that there's, you know, it isn't kind of like one neighborhood getting slammed with, you know, with every car that's going to go to and from the site, right? Some of this, some of the traffic and I'm sure there'll be employees coming from, from Walpole and, that's south or north from Walpole and, and, you know, and also exiting, exiting that way.
North, yeah. It's north, yeah, yep.
Yep. Yeah, I got mixed up. It's south Walpole, but it's north of North.
Exactly. Okay. Any comments from anyone? I can't see, are there any hands raised or?
Gary's taken off.
Yeah, he said thank you. Did we lose everyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, Bill's the only one on Zoom.
We do have a, we do have a comment from someone in the room.
Donna. Thank you very much. You were mentioning the, the conservation area being left, the section with the, for the Beducomic Greenway.
Yep.
And you said, "This is not something," and I missed the word. It was light industrial.
Oh, it's not a fulfillment center, it's not a warehouse, right? So there was, there's, and that's, that's not necessarily coming from me, I was, we had, you know, people in town said, nobody, you know, nobody wants one of those, right? So I just want to make it clear that this is, so it's not a, it's, we want to make sure that there's no discussion out there that this is a, you know, last mile, the Amazon delivery facility, or a FedEx logistics center, or, you know, something along those lines, right? There are locations for those, we don't think this is, this, you know, this project is not being designed to accommodate that use.
Okay.
Yeah, they may sound big, but like these 50,000 or 60,000 square foot units, I mean, that's, that leans a lot more towards a lot of small businesses, local, a lot more local business, not necessarily local, but small businesses, local businesses that are probably making things and it's, yeah, that's, that's what these are really designed for, is it would look a lot more storefront and office space, that's, you're going to see a company moving from Norwood or something, probably, you know, something like that, yeah.
I'm thinking like furniture makers, woodworkers, custom cabinetry, windows, doors.
I think we could, you know, you could also see, you know, the light manufacturers, like some of the ones that we, you know, that are presented in, earlier in the place, you could see high tech, right? Climate tech is, the state is making a major investment and it's part of the governor's economic development plan to invest in, you know, climate tech industries that are, that are going to be small manufacturers and others. So, you know, we think that this is going to be a very attractive location-
Yeah.
-to a variety of different industries and it's, you know, the access is good, the, you know, the employment base is, is, is strong and well-educated and, yeah, we, you know, it's, it is interesting with, you know, as you guys, as you all know, we've owned the site now, we're coming up on three years, or it's, it's been about three years and it's, you know, it's talked about almost on a daily basis in the office, right? But it's just, it's picked up a new level of energy and I, and I attribute it to, you know, the work that the board and Rich and everyone did on that zoning analysis, right? It really, that just, just needed to happen to kind of give us all some, some direction to move forward and, you know, there's a, like I said, a new level of energy and excitement regarding, you know, where this could go.
That's great.
Great.
And we always love visuals.
Yeah, it's, it's so helpful, right? It's, it really kind of changes the game to, it's so hard to describe that and envision it without, without that. And the technology's available, so let's utilize it, right?
Yeah, the renderings were very helpful. I mean, not everybody, when it's, when it's only 2D and flat, it's, it's a little more challenging to understand.
I almost said that in my presentation, I wasn't sure, I said, "Is this 2D or 3D?"
I mean, just a 2D plan sheet is, it's just hard to understand the scale of it and, and so it's a lot, it's much more beneficial to see the 3D rendering.
Yep.
Especially, I mean, you did a really good job of-
Especially the sightlines from the road, that was awesome.
Yeah.
You can actually turn it into a video too, so it's-
Don't tempt us.
Oh, yeah.
It's coming.
You can do a full fly-through.
It's coming, yeah.
Some of the site assessment stuff drive some of the timeline?
It's, it's going to drive, it will drive some of the timeline, right? I mean, we'd be, we'd, we would be able to move more quickly on the, on the development this, so it's, well, we're hoping for good news from EPA to make some additional funding available for, for site assessment work, right? We, I kind of ran through a, you know, a litany of items that are, that are, that are still necessary. Where, whether we get the EPA funding or not, we're moving forward with those, you know, we, we are, we've committed to doing those, you know, the additional groundwater ring, groundwater monitoring wells, you know, additional radiation testing, that was, you know, I mentioned that was a surprise and, you know, we, we were aware of significant environmental remediation costs that, that really raised the bar.
I didn't know it was this bad, yeah.
To the point, yeah.
I'll say that.
So, so we have to, we have to keep working on that. So it's, it's, it will, but it definitely affects the timeline.
Yeah, it's frustrating for us too, but they're just unfortunate with some of those things, there aren't shortcuts because you have to put, and then you have to wait for the results to come back and then it has to, then it goes, you know, you know how it is, it's just, so if you want to do it the right way, it can be frustratingly slow. We, you know, we get frustrated too, but you have to, the science is a science, so.
If you had to, you know, posit a ribbon cutting, where, where are we looking, three years ahead?
Would we like to be or?
Yeah, where would you like to be?
You know, we'd, yeah, we'd like to be, you know, we'd like to be actively permitting with you a year from now, right? And, and, you know, and looking for, looking in, you know, at construction for, you know, maybe late '25.
Okay.
That would be, you know, that would be a good timeline for us. That would, you know, and that would, you know, I think, because, because what the PIP group really, you know, what we need to really work with the PIP group on is that by, you know, by approving a project, you get the, you get the remediation, right? So we have to, but in, in, you know, they're going to want to see and we have to, we have to continue to work with them and our LSP for that matter to, you know, to make sure that what we're doing for remediation strategy is, you know, is going to work, is going to be, you know, is, is going to achieve the results that, that we want to achieve, right?
Right.
So we feel like we have a really good team working on that with us.
Okay. Awesome. Good to hear.
So is there, so the big question is, should we start initiation of the zoning process to take a look at that? I was one of his, forgot it.
Thanks, Rich.
So I, I think-
Yes.
-the way you put it was, let's have the lawyers talk and figure out what we need to do to move forward, right?
Yeah, well, that's on the deed restriction, but, but I think it relates to, it relates to the zoning as well. And I, I know at one point we were talking, or at least the, the town was talking about having, having Josh available to maybe help with some of the, you know, drafting of, of some of the, some of the zoning work that's needed, right? I, I think I, you know, I mentioned that I, you know, I'd be available to take a, take a crack at, at some of the drafting as well and, you know, I guess from, from your timeline, you know, is, are we, you know, could we, could, is it realistic to think that we could be on kind of a fall special town meeting if there is one, you know, with, you know, planning board review of draft? I, and before you answer that question, I will say, so I've, I've looked at the C-6 zoning and some of the, some of the commercial zonings in town. We're not that far off really, right? The biggest difference is building size, right? That's, that's not allowed, right? And, you know, we're, we're within kind of existing height restrictions, we would be needing lot sizes and setbacks and such. Where we would, where there needs to be additional thought is into, you know, having the list of allowed uses, right? And, and what that would mean, because from a leasing standpoint, what you can't run into is that, you know, that each use needs its own separate approval, right? We have to kind of, we would, we would ask that this be approved with an industrial park concept, that there are multiple uses that are allowed by right, right? Maybe there'll be some that, that require a special permit or, you know, you know, something along those lines that could have other, other impacts. But, you know, the decisions happen quickly in that world, right? So to, you know, when you're competing for a tenant, then one is ready to go and one needs a special permit, right? That's often, it's often difficult.
Yeah, right.
So that, I think those are, those are kind of, those are, those are the things and, you know, we'd, we'd love to work with, with Josh again and if there's an opportunity for that.
Okay. So you had asked, is there going to be a special town meeting in the fall? Probably, high probability.
Yeah.
To back in those dates, we would, yeah, we would need, as if we were to, to do something like that, I mean, we as a board would have to have those bylaws revisions buttoned up by September, go, so we could go to advisory, end of September, get on the warrant and town meeting's in November. So I mean, there would, there would have to be work that would have to be done over the summer to get it to a point that we could have that public hearing-
Yeah.
-in early September. It's sometime in September, but I, in a perfect world, public hearing early September, go to advisory after that, get their feedback and get it on the warrant and-
Which to me, that means we should have like drafts available at the end of May, in June.
Yesterday, yeah.
So that-
Yeah, kind of.
So that, summer months are, you know, we understand how summer months are.
I mean, we, we're, we're right now in the process of, as you were here at the beginning of this meeting, with a, a public hearing, a second public hearing on an article and, you know, town meeting's going to be coming up in two weeks, so we're, we're busy-
You're busy.
-getting all those things ready for, for town meeting.
Yep.
And then we, so we wouldn't be starting anything new until June, but we would need to start in June hitting the ground running.
Yeah.
Because it's June, July, August has to, yeah, we got to get it all-
Got to get work done.
Yeah, get it done so it's, it's ready for a public hearing in September. Just if we were to do that, that's kind of the timeline. So, so, yeah, we would, I mean, we can definitely, it sounds like we can definitely start the, the process and work with you on those revisions that would need and the uses and so forth.
Yeah. Great, excellent. Great.
Awesome. I'll do whatever I can.
Thank you so much and I know that you added us late to this agenda and it was, and if we knew the Bruins were playing, we might not have-
I don't know about the Bruins, this was actually the highlight of my night, I don't really care about the Bruins.
Yeah, thank you for coming, this is, this was a great presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right. So town, we'll let you-
Sharing.
Yeah, that's right, you're still connected.
Am I, yeah.
No, I think you're off now. And we lost Gary.
Am I off?
Yep.
Gary's flag was taken off.
So Rich, town planner updates. Get ready for a meeting, right?
Ready for a town meeting, yes. So we do have a forum next Thursday night.
Which is fully remote, right?
7:00 PM, yes.
For some reason I had it in my head tonight was remote, until Melissa pinged me about something, I was like, "Oh, we are in person tonight."
Yeah, so I'm worried about coming in the building on the 9th of May.
Okay.
I'm working on the color coding in terms of the schedule of use-
Okay.
-for town meeting, which would be a color handout separately.
When do you think you'll have a draft for me to, early next week?
Excuse me, early next week.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you. I had a computer crash, so I lost some of the stuff I had to work on, so I got to go back through it, unfortunately.
Okay.
Yeah, early next week, for sure.
All right.
Do have to make a slight adjustment, I don't know if you understood my cryptic message, maybe not, but in terms of the language for the schedule of use on page 18, it's fine, that's the way it was advertised. Unfortunately, there's like a clause that was added into the language on top of the scheduled use in the back of the book, so we just need to make an amendment to that so they match up. The table's good, the table's good, there was that-
So we're going to, we're going to need to draft that up next week too and get, did you already, you already sent that to Justin?
Already drafted, yeah.
Yeah, you already, that's right, you did that, yeah, that's right. There was those emails earlier, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to give you a heads up in terms of that. And, yeah, we have a busy night the night before town meeting, on the 14th of September.
September?
Excuse me, what, September?
Hey, wow, we're jumping way ahead of September already.
Sorry, May 14th, it's a pretty busy night.
You're scaring me, okay? We have a lot of public hearings, I see.
Five public hearings, I think, yes.
Okay, we're, okay.
So we'll make sure the air, I know, I know the air's turned off now, but we'll-
Okay.
That's after the town election.
It is, yes.
It's the week after.
Yes.
So, yeah, we'll also have to talk about board reorganization for our board.
Yes.
I'm sure that's already on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on, it is on the agenda, not there, that's all. Because it's just showing the public hearings.
Yep.
And then we'll have, we'll update on Shire Industrial Park too, so.
Okay. Well, thankfully, we won't have on the May 14th, even though it is the night before our, our town meeting, we won't have in-depth discussions about zoning bylaws, because that should all be wrapped up by then.
Correct, yes.
So it should just be a fun-filled evening of public hearings.
Yes, yes.
For the handouts.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, because we, we know we need them in color. Do you think we should do the map or do you think we should do the slides that show what's on the lots now or both?
Well, whatever we provide as a handout, we also have to think about what do we want to show on the screen? And I, so I think it should be the same, just to be consistent.
Yeah.
You have a lot of slides there. They're all very informative, but I, that was a long presentation to do it. Jay's not going to allow something like that at town meeting.
Yeah.
And, and there should be, and there should be no need for that.
The whole thing?
He will.
Yeah. Oh, so I should say this, because we had the moderators meeting Tuesday.
Yeah.
So this article's being moved up, by the way, too, in terms of when it will be voted on.
Oh.
Because Jay wants the opportunity for maximum participation.
Right, it's going to be right after the community, or.
Budget?
No.
Budget report.
Community reports. Yeah, so it's going to be right after all the reports will be this article. So it'll be moved out of order.
We can confer with him, but I think he did want to give this time because of the importance of it.
But it took us almost 30 minutes to go through the slides tonight. I don't think we want to do that at town meeting. That's a long.
Yeah.
It needs to be.
Yeah.
10 at most?
Just remove all the transition side.
No, but let, but I also want to just mention that we, we discussed it tonight at the public hearing. We're having the community forum next, next week. There shouldn't be a need to do it all again a third time.
There shouldn't be.
It can be a, a condensed version.
I agree in condensed. I think the big focus areas that obviously hit home were the tables with the differences between B1 and what we're proposing.
Right.
I think an example slide of some things that are currently developed for one of those zones, I don't think we need both. I think ideally the handout should be the zoning map with the colors and the patches. And I would probably cap it around those three to four slides.
I would also like to add that it would be helpful to note, why are we doing this?
Right.
Like, why? Kind of was one of your first slides. And what are the penalties if we don't?
Right.
So there's a couple more pieces to it. So it's like, why are we doing it? What are the impacts of doing it? The zoning map.
Yeah, the impact was really important as well, like the funding that we would lose.
Right.
Yeah, that's huge. Make sure that's in there.
So it's most of those slides.
Yeah, not much left, but.
But they're.
It could be consolidated though.
Yeah.
There were, I took out all the individual images.
Right.
For the, for the town hall.
Right. But I also don't want to, so I'm, I don't think you need to recreate slides. I don't want to introduce any new content, you know, I want to stay consistent with what we presented tonight and, and at the forum next week. It's more about just take what we have, streamline it down.
Yeah, it sounds like we've got almost about six slides out of what you've already got in there. That way you just pull out and focus on those.
Right. So.
I'd be interested in some of the acreage numbers that we didn't see in there, that town hills, so many acres and of those were excluding.
Well, not excluding, but using for the overload.
Using for continuity between parcels or.
Yeah, you mean in terms of like the developable land versus excluded land.
What's the percent that we're actually looking at versus what's available?
Really? It sounds like it's almost all over here.
But it's really.
A really small portion over the other end, right? It's one number acres.
Oh, yeah, between the two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Unville is only 20.
Right, right, yeah.
Six or something.
Here is 60, it's 20 over there.
But you got to be careful too. You don't want to like start burying people with numbers and stats.
I think that might be beneficial to have for the community forum next week.
Yep.
Just so that it is there, it's being recorded. But, yeah, we want to be careful about how much extra data we provide.
Did we also get a determination or do we know the answer about the other zone or the other voting requirements? Definitions that are in 310 2.1, that does that fall under two-thirds requirement?
I'm going to find out.
If it does, don't we, do we have to split it off as a separate article?
Seems like we need to know that, this, like.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll talk to, talk to town council and. I could also run it by the AG too. I, I think it's probably going to, I think it's still a fall majority, honestly, because it's related to this.
But it lives in a different section.
It does, but it's all wrapped into this requirement, because, you know, the.
Unless you move the definitions into this itself, and it doesn't apply.
But the thing is, we're, so. I would, well, the thing is, so in terms of adding an overlay district, that's in a separate section of the bylaw. So you have to, that, you have to reference it. So I can't, can't imagine parsing all those things out because they're together, you know, that it would, would, I'll ask town council just to clarify, but I'm thinking it would just be the majority vote that, you know, because we, we got to zen the mo, you know, we have to amend the zoning law. Well, the zoning map is in a separate section of the zoning bylaw, so. Together, but I'll, I'll ask.
Right, but we've had others of these that we didn't understand the correct voting and then it got called back, right? Because we didn't, it wasn't defined or we, we thought we needed a majority and we needed two-thirds somewhere else or.
In pre-town, before town, the only thing.
I feel like there was one of these that.
No, the only one. No, we actually bundled them. The only thing we were able to, well, no, I mean, he's, no, Eric's correct in terms of when we did the B1, there were certain provisions that were able.
We did separate them out.
We separated them out, so.
That's right.
This bundle was majority vote, the other one wasn't, so.
That's right, yeah, the B1 was, yeah.
There was a few changes in there that we were able to do that.
But we were also using a different style for the bylaw from an organization perspective, where we were like kind of coupling things differently as well.
Yeah, we did. There was things that we could, so for example, like increase in density was one that you could do by majority. When we did some of the, there were, so there's a few provisions that we could do that we did. In this case, it's kind of all package, because it's all in one. So I'll check with council in terms of what I say that it's all part of the MBTA zoning.
So we have these two articles and then we also.
We'll shoot for two-thirds anyway, so let's not, right?
Yeah.
Cover the base.
Who's presenting the articles? Do we know that yet?
Not yet.
We think we know.
Oh, am I, am I doing my stuff?
What have recent other towns' votes come in at or are they?
Oh, you mean like the?
Yeah, the percentages for.
I don't know. Have to look and see. I recall, I don't know, commit the amendment, but I think there was some communities where some of the town residents challenged the voting and the AG said no. Kind of barking, you know, kind of going down that path like, wait, this should be two-thirds, not the majority. Let me look at, I'll ask town council regardless, but, no, I think the continuity is that you did the presentation tonight.
Just do a shorter one next time?
Well, I, yeah, no, I think it makes a lot of sense that Melissa and/or Gary or would do the MBTA zoning presentation. Yeah, well, it'd be, yeah, with me. So here's, here's, I think, how it's going to work is we got those community reports. We need to do a master plan report. So I got to think about how, how to do that. I'll probably float something out as a draft and let you all provide your feedback on that. But we got to do that and then that'll roll right into the MBTA zoning, because we'll, we'll do that as kind of the last community report, I think. And then, yeah, so then I can, I can kind of kick it off, pass it over to you to do that. And then it's going to be a, based upon the questions, I think it'll be a combination of, of us as planning board answering, Rich answering some, and even possibly Sue.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So it's really going to be a group effort. It's a team. It's more, it's a team effort.
Yeah. And it could be a case where town council may have to chime in as well too.
Yeah, that's right. He'll be, yeah.
Yep. Depends on the questions that come up.
Right. And then the use table, I mean, I, I can do that. That shouldn't be, I'm not anticipating a lot of a lot of concerns, but, but also I think any one of us could probably do that. It's showing too challenging.
You know, in turn, I'll, I'll speak to town council, but in terms of some of the, the points that Peter made earlier tonight and then in terms of one of the things he wanted to, you know, the board to consider for recommendation.
I don't think that consideration, that's, that would require a feasibility study, an economic feasibility study.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, I stole.
Oh, the 15%?
Done it.
I'm sorry, I stole it.
Well, we had talked about that before. I mean, on back and forth about it anyway.
Well, I know, but, but he, you know, he's.
Well, that would be, so that would be something if, if an amendment like that were to get proposed at town meeting, I mean, we couldn't, it, it would.
So it would stall the whole process.
You couldn't move forward with the vote.
We'd have to go back in the fall.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I don't know if you can propose a, this would, I guess, this would be a question for town council. I don't know if you can propose a language in a bylaw that has a, that's conditional like this.
Right. The advice was the, they highly frowned upon that.
Okay.
But he said it also just went through Millis.
Millis is not done yet.
So.
So Millis isn't a consideration of draft form yet, but it's not, it was. The advice at, at some of the workshops that, you know, the AG was at them too, not to have that kind of conditional aim to it. And that's what this is kind of is. I mean, we clearly know that, you know, 15% would be above it, so unless we do that financial feasibility analysis.
Which has to be done by a third party for this.
Correct.
MBTA.
Yeah. So it speaks to the thing of somebody tries to propose amendment on the floor, then you think about the context that might knock us out of compliance potentially, so.
Yeah, and anything that gets brought up about amending like the overlay district, you know, the, the map, well, that would require a complete recalculation. You can't do that on the fly at that evening, so.
I mean, I also don't think, based on, I mean, I, I know we, we would have to get it done by a third party. I just, I don't see how keeping the inclusionary bylaw the way that it is where it's tiered is really going to help. I know, I'm glad that he's a proponent for affordable housing. I just don't know how that is going to help, because no developer is going to want to take such a financial hit. Therefore, they'll just go a different route.
Right, and that's what we're seeing.
Right.
But that's for, topic for another day.
Right. I mean, I appreciate that he's thinking about the affordable.
Absolutely.
Well, and so, and further in terms of getting more informed on this topic, yes, Millis is trying to consider doing that. Millis also has to do an economic feasibility analysis for that requirement. I spoke to Andrea in MAPC and they're working on Millis's for them. So that's not, as I asked her a couple of weeks ago, I said, do you have any more economic feasibility analysis that we can look at and see where things are trending? I got another one, but again, not, not comparable for us. It was, I want to say Salem, it was another, but it was more urban community. So really, again, 15% was feasible, but it was really multifamily development, like multi-story. It's not, it's not really what, in the sphere of what we might see.
There's nothing to say you couldn't go back in the fall or future to change it.
Correct.
Add this in the, to the future.
Yeah, no, it's not, absolutely not.
We might have a, a whole flood of these drafts that we can look at that have been approved.
Exactly.
And look at their analysis and do our own.
100%, yeah. So we, we absolutely could do that. And I think it kind of talks a little bit about, you know, in terms of just thinking about just taking a little bit longer perspective on this, because this, that inclusionary bylaw was proposed, you know, that was proposed and voted on 21. Since that time, we've had not one development since then, you know, that's come forward, you know, at this time. So the rush to maybe get something that's there, we haven't, it could happen, but it's not like we're missing something per se, as opposed to being thoughtful about looking at it.
Yeah, and I have, I've mentioned to you guys at the last meeting, the spreadsheet that I put together that shows how the financials change with the inclusionary bylaw. I can send that to all of you guys, but I didn't yet, because I wanted to make sure that, I was going to send it to you, but then you can't respond back to me until the next meeting, right? If I send it to all of you. I just wanted to double check that. Like, there can be no back and forth.
No, there can't be any back and forth.
But I can send it to you.
Yes, you can send it out, but we can't.
You can share it with everybody.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's right. We just can't have any back and forth communication unless it's like.
Scheduling.
Scheduling.
Right.
That's different, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yep. Available, not available.
Right. But back and forth on, on a topic.
That would be considered.
We can't do that unless we're in a setting like this.
Yeah, so I'll send it to you guys and then you can.
Or a Zoom.
Or a Zoom setting that, but we have to call a meeting.
Yeah, it has to be.
It has to be a public meeting. So any, anything else, Rich?
Handout, we were talking, we started talking about handouts.
We talked.
Yeah, for the MBTA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think at one point there was a, is it going to be the same slide that you had for the enlargements of the two areas or is it?
And you don't think that's necessary, right?
I think we talked about there, there was a proponent, a good reason to do that.
For one of them, right?
I think as a slide, you show one of them as an example, like this is already like a developed area. We're not.
No, no, not that, the, the enlargement of the map, like Peter had when he drew out every, he something highlighted it and was real clear where they were. You count it's 12 lots or.
A little bit bigger.
Yeah, this would have been nicer.
Yeah, but you can't see it.
You can't see it, I know.
So the, in the presentation, the outline in the orange is the.
Like the slide that was shown?
Yeah, we had the two.
Right.
Yeah, we had two slides.
That slide looked a lot better and much more visible.
Less colors.
Right.
But those, maybe, I don't know, that also had the aerial in the background and I don't know if that helps or hurts trying to see the property lines or how many lots there are. I couldn't.
So we can see that on the GIS map.
So, but which one are we going to hand out as a handout?
Does everything need to be colored?
No.
Or can you only have just the specific ones that you're changing?
It doesn't.
You can highlight.
The reason that we were going to do it colored is because you can't see the line.
Right, I'm saying like you're just changing two specific, those two specific areas that are going to be the MBTA. Can you just have those ones, everything else kind of gray and that these are the specific areas that we're changing?
I think what I can do is, I know what Eric's asking, is I can, I'll play around with taking the GIS and then put the zoning map. Yeah, I'll take the arrow, I'll just use, I won't use the aerial, which shows the property line, the, you know, the building's there. I'll kind of turn down the opaqueness of the zoning district.
Or just see the outline of the new and.
But then I will outline the new, I'll put the new district, the proposed district on top of it. So like you'll see the B1 and then I'll, so basically what you saw there with the orange line, I'll recreate that with the zoning showing. And we'll just have that, those two zones and have you take a look at it.
Okay.
I think that will be, because if we do that, I don't think we need the big zoning map, because the zoning map is just not.
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't see.
Not as a handout, I mean.
Not as a handout. The handout should be the slides, whatever we decide, whatever is the condensed version of the slides.
So you, so I could, so I could do it, so what if I do it next, you know, put it in the presentation for the night to see how, view it? Add it?
You could send it to, I mean, just look at them and say, that's, that's helpful.
And then we could add it in?
Turn.
Yep.
Okay. We'll do that.
Yep.
Do it that way.
Let's do that.
But I know what you're talking about.
It almost has to be so zoomed in that you can just read the roads around there and nothing else.
Right, because you do need that perspective where you can see where it is and the streets help.
Yeah, I was going to kind of bring it in tight, so it looks good, but you still have.
But right now you can't read any of, like.
Flip this over to him. Oh, I know what you're talking about. No, I know what you mean.
That whole thing is in this corner. That whole thing is in this corner.
Right. That's why I put the double white.
Yeah, fill that out on the whole page, just those six properties.
That's just to draw your attention to it?
Uh huh. Because you couldn't see it. But I did send this out. There was somebody looking for the colored version of this and I think Rich sent it via email from the actual maps and I put them into a Google Slides and just put the link on Facebook forum so that he could zoom in and see, but same, like, that's what he was looking for, exactly what he was talking about.
Yeah, there's a version of this PDF that's infinitely zoomable, right?
Yeah, on the, it is.
Easily zoomable?
Yeah.
But I know what you're talking about. We'll come in tight in terms of, like.
Room and room.
Yeah, the district.
Right.
That sounds good.
Alright. And then we'll. See who knows.
Okay. Alright.
We didn't have as many people as.
So that's, that's handouts. So we talked about handouts. We talked about prep for meeting, town meeting. And then I guess we also talked about prep for our public forum.
Yes.
Next week.
And I'll have that, that is gonna post you so that you can go throughout the building if you need to in terms of town meeting. So you need to go to advisory board or select board ahead of time or do, you know, at the planning board on town meeting floor, you can be fully posted.
Okay.
Good.
Beautiful. Cover all bases.
Yeah, we'll just be, cover all bases just to be sure.
Yep. Alright.
Because the advisory board is gonna be voting that night on this, so.
On this, like before the town meeting?
Before the town meeting, yes.
So then do we need, so then we probably need to have, if our, our planning board meeting probably needs to open up at before seven, right?
Yes.
We probably need to open it up at, say, 6:30 or six or something, just, just in case we need to.
Yeah, maybe six, yeah.
Maybe six.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We'll check with, well, check with see what one of them is gonna be.
I would, yeah, find out when advisory's open and theirs.
Okay.
Probably do at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Works. Alright, anything else?
No, that's it for tonight.
I think we did well. Alright, do you have anything for us to sign over there? Or is that what that's for or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay, alright, well, we don't, we can.
Yeah, you don't need to be.
Wrap up the meeting and, alright, so there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, alright, all those, we're not gonna do a roll call vote because Gary left, so. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Yeah, he's flying.
And we are done.